This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, good evening everyone, and good evening everyone joining us on Channel 191, Public Access. Open tonight's meeting from the Southampton Planning Board, Wednesday, May 21. I have a quorum present, our newly-elected member James Labrie down the far end, Mark Arnold, Paul Fergal, and myself, Paul Demon. And our first order of business tonight will be taking up a site plan review for residential solar array for Chris Bowen at 4 Coleman Road. And we have a representative here, papers straight, from Greenfield Solar. We ask, come up to the microphone and just make your presentation. And we also, in your packet tonight, receive the letter from Greenfield Solar with the requested design and also the waivers requested. So it's all yours. So just identify yourself for us, please.
John Ward, Greenfield Solar.
Okay.
So what we're doing is, we're doing a 10.3 kilowatt ground-mounted system for Mr. Bowen, behind his house. You have in your packet the setbacks from property lines. The one that's closest is the, what I would call, the right property line. You know, we're only 20 feet away from that property line there. And what's there is a row of Arbor Vitae, the property line behind the row of Arbor Vitae, and then the other, the adjoining property is a O'Reilly's Auto Parts. So this array will be not seen from the road, not seen from, you know, adjoining properties, really.
And this is in addition to something that's already on the house roof?
That's correct.
So it's supplementing what's there, or?
Yes, supplementing what's there. Since he did the house roof array several years ago, he's added, you know, mini splits and electric vehicles and so on. His consumptions increased, so he's upping the size of his array.
Now, I thought I printed out, and I printed out the wrong one, but you also sent me a cover letter that had the waivers on it. Have you got a copy of that with you?
I don't believe that I do, unless it's on my phone.
You've got it on your phone?
This is, it's on the back of that sheet.
What is it? Have we got it?
No.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry.
You've got it?
Oh yeah, okay.
Okay, good.
I printed out the wrong one. Okay, so let me just go over the waivers then. And for everybody's benefit here, we just passed a bylaw in town a few weeks back at a town meeting that would eliminate the process of having to come here for a ground-mount residential solar array. This has been a contentious issue with us for the past couple of years, because we were the only town within many miles that I could find that required a residential ground-mount of 10K, 15K, or whatever, small units to come for a site plan review.
Right.
So that was passed at town meeting, and we have been lenient with the most recent ground mounts we've approved recently, because most of the criteria that are in the old existing bylaw, which the new bylaw won't take effect until the AG's office approves it sometime in July or August. But the criteria in the existing bylaw was pretty much pertain to mid-scale and large-scale developments, and it had no bearing on a lot of the residential units. So, given that, Claire Chang, who is also the representative from Greenfield Solar, in her letter, asked waivers for the following requirements for site plan review: per Section 275.76, Paragraph G, Line 2, A, B, D, and G, 5 through 7. And also waiver to not have to notify 300 feet of butters, landscape architect or engineering survey. And those are pretty much the major ones they asked for waivers on, according to the existing bylaw. So is there any other information you'd like to share with us outside of what you've already described?
No, I think, I think you've covered it with that.
Any questions from the board members?
I have one question. The detailed property plan that you showed is just the Mass GOS, basically. When we come assurances that the board has, you will comply with the site setbacks. You stated it will be by 20 feet back, but without a surveyed line there, you said your turn of vital line. Is it going to be established by a surveyor that the exact property line before you put that in?
Chris actually has pins, and yeah, we went by the pins. We actually did that two hours ago.
Wouldn't that also fall under the building permit that they have to pull also? The building inspector would verify that?
I would assume so.
Yes.
I would assume, but...
Yes.
Do they require a plot plan, is what you're saying?
That was the, they're asking a waiver.
What was it again?
They're asking a waiver from a plot plan.
They're asking for a waiver, not from the plot plan, but from having a registered surveyor do it.
Got it, I see, I see, yes.
You know, when you're dealing with a large scale, and even the medium-scale arrays, the margins are there to support such things. But, you know, you get into the smaller residential units, and it's just, it's tougher to justify doing that. But thank you for the question.
Any other questions, Paul? Hearing none, then I will call for a vote, a motion. I move that we, what do we, accept the site, I mean, accept the... Accept the site plan review.
Accept the site plan review, and then grant the requested waivers.
Motion's been made and seconded, made by Mark and seconded by Paul. Any other further discussion? And that is with the waivers that have been included in the packet. All in favor? Aye.
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 Approved, and I will send that out to you by an email the next day or two, the decision, and then you can go from there. The building inspector will be copied on it as well. Okay, thank you. Good luck.
That was easy, huh?
Enjoy, enjoy all that savings you're gonna have from those kilowatt-hours. Next, we have, is anyone here from Northeast Surveys? Yeah, you are. Okay. We have two ANRs. The maps are in your packet. I have the application fee, the fees for each lot were submitted. Two ANRs. The first one is... Oh, damn me. Paper picker, paper. Did I put 59 Maple? Yeah, I'm sorry. 59 Maple Street. And we have here tonight whom to represent the applicants?
Yes, Bridgette Likely with Kestrel Land Trust. So Kestrel Land Trust worked with Northeast and the landowner for the subdivision of the original parcel in order to place a conservation restriction on the subdivision parcel. So approximately, I think, 69 acres for Maple Street property, and I believe sufficient frontage with the minimum 175 feet.
All right, so are you adding to that lot, or, I mean, there's existing buildings on there now, right?
So it was, the buildings were all excluded, and then the backland is what will have the conservation restriction. So no further building will be happening on it. Well, we did leave out a portion of land from the conservation restriction area for potentially a future house lot, but the majority will be undeveloped.
Questions from the board?
This is 59 Maple, this is not Glendale, right?
Correct.
Okay.
But similar scenarios for both.
Jim, any questions?
No, looks straightforward.
Paul?
None.
No?
None, I'm sorry.
Mark, no? Without further ado, is there a motion to endorse the plan for 59 Maple Street? So moved. It's your first moment, it's your first motion, Jim. Motion made by Jim and seconded by Paul. Any other further discussion? All in favor? Aye. And you are also representing the second ANR for 155 Glendale Road, which is, it's part of the winery?
Yes, correct. So similar scenario here. We worked to subdivide out this parcel with the intent to put a conservation restriction on it. And unlike 59 Maple Street, the conservation restriction will take place over the entirety of that parcel that's been excluded from the remainder of the vineyard operation.
Questions?
I have one concerning the existing septic system, Leach Field and vent pipe cross over the proposed property line.
Yes, and so in the conservation easement itself, we make an allowance for that under the accessory improvement area.
I think Title V requires you to get a variance from the local board of health. You can meet all the criteria for it, but I don't know if we can endorse the plan knowing it would create a violation of Title V.
I wasn't made aware of that.
It's a requirement from DEP that you have to be 10 feet away from a property line with any portion of a septic system, either the septic tank or leach field.
Okay, I'll need to, I guess, review that with the surveyor then.
Yeah. I mean, I think your plan was perfect, that was the criteria within. I don't know if I turned a purview of this board, whether or not we could...
We can condition the endorsement on that, and I contact the board of health to look into it.
That would be good.
And suggest you do the same.
Sure.
So let me get the wording straight on that, Mark. Could you repeat that again for me?
That endorse the plan with condition that the applicant get required documentation from the board of health that it's received appropriate variances from the board of health regarding encroachment of the leach field on the proposed property line.
Encroachment of the leach field?
Yes.
Within 10 feet?
It's, it's across over. The code says it has to be at least 10 feet away.
Encroachment of the leach field. So encroachment of Leach Field, how do we finish that off?
On the adjacent parcel, right?
The Title V says from property line.
Correct, but it's on the other side, it crosses the line, correct. Right, so they just need the...
Encroachment of the leach field on the adjacent property.
Adjacent property.
Do you see now why Dan didn't want to take the notes anymore? Okay, so we have, do we have a motion then? You want to make that motion, Mark?
I move that we accept the, endorse the ANR plan for, where are the addresses?
155 Glendale?
Glendale Street Road, with the provision that the applicant...
Get a variance from the board of health for the encroachment of the leach field on the adjacent property.
Correct.
Second, oh, you got it. Paul got it.
It's your first day.
I'll do the third, if you want.
Who was first, Jim or Paul?
Paul got it. He won.
Motion made by Paul and seconded by Jim. Any other further discussion? All in favor? Okay, you're good to go. Now, do I send that to Brian? Brian Pranutovich?
I mean, if you're willing to sign at least the...
I have to endorse the plans. I was gonna drop them off at the office over there tomorrow.
I can take at least the ones that are, the Maple Street one, if that's, or if you can sign both and wait. I don't know, would you wait for the variance in order to endorse the Glendale?
Yeah, but I probably would prefer to drop all of them off at his office, is that okay? Or do you need that for some reason tonight?
No, I mean, Kestrel will be the one doing the recording itself, so, but if you'd rather have it go back to Northeast first, that's fine, and I can pick it up from him.
Yeah, I'd rather do that.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Sure. Yeah, thank you.
That's your setback and requirement for variance.
Now, I don't have, I don't have any of Kestrel's information on here, it's all, it's all Northeast. Do I have, can I have your email?
Sure.
And this is strictly only Maple Street, right, that you're concerned with, or both of them?
Well, both, Kestrel is working with, and we'll be doing their recording.
Okay, so what, can I send the email to?
Sure, it's Bridgette, B-R-I-G-E-T, at Kestrel, K-E-S-T-R-E-L, trust.org.
Bridgette@kestreltrust.org.
Sure.
Okay, good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's that. Next, we have on the agenda a request for withdrawal of Chapter 61 land located at 152 County Road, Lot 1, requested by TCB Fruits, which is also known as the Bishista Orchard. And who's here tonight is to request the notice of intent.
I can request.
Now, just to give you a little background for Jim anyway, and probably Paul, because I don't think you were here at that meeting, but Mark certainly remembers that several weeks ago, we approved an ANR for this same lot on County Road. And it's kind of in reverse of what should happen sometimes. You take it out of chapter and then do the ANR. So this was in reverse. So the ANR for this lot's been approved, but it hadn't been taken out of chapter land yet. So go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, so my niece and her husband, we gave them a lot on County Road, so they can build their house. We just need it taken out of 61A. Was that one and a quarter acres?
One and a half.
One and a half. Okay. 1.4952.
So the process here is that it goes to the Conservation Commission. I received a copy from them that they waived their right of first refusal. The assessors is waiting for our approval, which ultimately goes to the Select Board for final approval. So at this point, we're just, formality, that personally, I don't believe we need the land for anything. So I would certainly recommend to waive our right of first refusal on it, but open the board discussion.
I'd like to just throw something out there. I'm not 100% positive on this, but 61A, when you take it out, if it stays with, if your family member's building on it, there is no right of first refusal for the town.
That's what I thought.
That's, I just did it. I did it myself. My son built next to me. I called everybody and I said, "No, not required." And I don't think it's required if it's a family member building on parcel. You take it out, and that's, the town does not have a right of first refusal. That's, I believe that's the...
And this originated from the assessors' office then, huh?
What's that?
This originated from the assessors' office then, right?
I don't know.
Yeah, it was our understanding that the family connection was too far apart, so that it was still required to have right of first refusal, but that was...
Possibly a statement.
Yeah, it could, so...
I'm not quite sure how close the relatives have to be. That's the gray area.
Yeah, right, my sister's daughter. So you were advised that, so maybe the connection is that far apart, the reason that it's here.
Be no harm, and asking a waiver, maybe it's not required. If, is there a problem granting a waiver, if even if we don't have the authority to grant it, or it's not required? Just to be safe, because there seems to be...
All I can tell you is that, you know, when I get these that comes before us, I'm assuming that the powers-to-be in the assessors' office know what's going on, because they're paid employees and I am not. So I'm just assuming, because we didn't generate all this paperwork in this request, and the process it goes through, so I can only take the assessors for their word and expertise.
Act accordingly, like you said, Mark. We can approve it, or whatever, and then if it's needed, if it's needed, it's great. If not, then it doesn't matter, right?
I think it's moot if it's not.
Right, exactly.
We had another parcel a couple months ago where we approved the 15A and determined that the 60A1A had never been officially documented, and we had to delay their transfer for quite a while.
Yeah, that was on Pomerid Road.
Across the street from the house.
Yes, it was.
That was my only concern, I just saved bookwork rather than creating.
It's funny, the ANR form has got to be changed, because it's ancient, but there's nothing on it, because I read it before, and some of the first questions should be asked, is the land in Chapter 61A or B, before they even go? And if it says yes, then they have to go through this process. We've had it happen a couple of times where the ANRs come through, and all of a sudden you find out that, oh, by the way, we had to take this out of chapter after the ANR was approved. So it's kind of a backwards process, but that's the way the ANR form reads. No one knows, you know, the proper procedure, because it's not listed on the form. But without further ado, do I have a motion to approve the, or waive our right of first refusal for this parcel at 152 County Road, Lot 1?
Can I say so moved, or do I have to repeat it?
So moved works. He just read it.
Second.
Motion made by Mark and seconded by Paul, that the board waive their right of first refusal, and will send this on to Conservation and to the Select Board and the assessors' office. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So moved.
I was just, I'm on the site, 61A, I'm trying to figure it out. I haven't found it yet.
Very good.
But you're all set with us anyway, so.
Thank you.
Good luck.
There's three different factors. One, you have 61A and 61B.
61B was...
61, okay, 61, one of them is just open space, I think.
Yeah, it's open.
61A is agriculture, and the other one is forestry, I think?
Forestry, yes.
I think the third one. And I've read that rule, that whole, over and over. I've been involved with it so much in the past, but I don't know the family connection, how close you have to be relative-wise.
My last agenda item here is building permit that I previously approved back on the 7th of May, because we didn't have a meeting the last time. But it was well under 40,000 square feet. It was a building permit for a house being constructed, excuse me, at 220 County Road. The applicant was Dmitry Mikhailachenko. So I would just ask for the board's approval of my approval, of that building permit.
I move that we use your authorization as a chair to approve the building permit for...
220 County Road.
220 County Road.
Second.
Motion made by Mark and seconded by Jim. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That's all the agenda items I have, friends. I just have a couple of, is there any committee reports of any sort? Any town committees you want?
Speaking of committee reports, who is on the CPC on this board? What was Dan on? I'm just, I'm not here anymore. Who is the CPC rep?
I think Dan was CPA.
Community preservation.
That's me.
Oh, that's you, okay. I didn't know if Dan was on it, and he's not here, so I just asked.
Dan was a representative from the Select Board.
Okay.
And I won't, I won't take these new appointments up for chairmanship until our next meeting, but I'm the PBPC rep, Mark CPC. We have nobody on open space. Dan was Select Board. I thought there was another committee, but I can't think of it.
Here's the master plan.
You were master.
Yes, master plan.
Yeah, you were master.
Yes.
Spoke to the town administrator yesterday. They're going to be putting out an advertisement for a planner, sustainability person that will assist the planning board, Conservation Committee, the Housing Authority, possibly the open space, and maybe help CPC too, I don't know. But it's a kind of a quasi position, which is, I've been lobbying for for the last four or five years, and looks like it come to fruition. But the, I've asked Richard Harris on behalf of the town administrator that asked for a job description, so we get together. So Richard's gonna put something together, and then I'll meet with Scott. But this will certainly be like a junior planner position, because the town can't certainly afford a senior planner like City of Northampton or Easthampton. like City of Northampton or East Hampton. So, whatever it may be, but outline the duties. And that way there, it'll take some of the pressure off of the administrative stuff that the chairman has to be strapped with these days. And it might make my life a little easier and less hassle for me to try to answer emails and phone calls and write decisions and write this and write that. It's gotten to be more than a volunteer job. It's a part-time job. But that being said, we'll see what happens with that. But I don't expect, after they advertise it in July, I wouldn't expect that somebody probably wouldn't be on board until September, maybe by the time they interview folks and whatever.
Who does the hiring? The Select Board, or is it the planning board?
I think we probably will have some representatives. You know, one or two of us will be asked to be on the interview committee or whatever. I would hope so. Trying to think there was something else. I forgot to write it down. I don't have any warrants. There was no committee reports. I don't know.
Look, Mr. James, proud of you and then Richard and rest of the board for writing all those warrants and getting them approved for the last town meeting we had.
Oh, there you go. Thanks for the... Yes. All three... Or four. All four warrant articles we had were passed without opposition. And that's a... That's a credit to Richard Harris for all the work that he had presenting all those and writing them up. We spent several hours hashing those over, over the last couple of years. So, that was great. The solar site plan review, special permit, and access... Affordable dwelling units. All four passed. So, again, those will be put in the new regs probably sometime in August or September, whenever the AG's office gets around.
Yeah, when it comes to zoning or bylaws, when we changed the zoning of the Red Barn, it took almost a year before the AG got back. That was huge. They said that the zoning, they just... They go really slow with that. They just take their time.
A lot of the stuff Lucy was telling me, the town clerk, is the... How picky they are. You have to have all your paperwork, the legal notices, the public notices, postings out here on the board, plans, this, that, minute... You know, there's a whole array of stuff. And if you're off one item, they stall it until you can come up with it. And it just... That's another thing that... And some of it in years past has been my fault because of not being on the ball. But I mean, you gotta... When you have a public hearing, all the dates, all the legal notices, all this and that, it all has to be, you know...
Christine.
Yeah. And sometimes it falls through the cracks. And because I'm not as sharp as I once was when I was in business, so... And it makes her job that much tougher if you have to go digging. Finally found stuff. And I had to respond to the AG's office myself to try to verify that it was presented and passed on to Lucy, but it's just time concern.
We had a big... There was a glitch that they found in the zoning of the Red Barn. But they ended up... It was like, well, no, you didn't do it. Well, okay, now what do we do? Makes... We'll just ask them for a waiver. Fill out a waiver. You all sat. Such a big problem, but yeah, it was such a simple solution.
So going forward, I don't know how much... Richard's probably gonna have to put in a contract, but I'm gonna have to talk to Scott about that for the next fiscal year, how much that we're gonna be maybe allowed with this new person. Because our revolving funds per se are getting down there. So I don't know how much... How much consulting we can do with him. If we get a new person on board, whether that person's going to be capable enough to rewrite zoning for us. Hope so, but if not, I'll have to... We'll have to pick Richard's brain on that and find out. And I'll ask Scott. I think they put $5,000 in the budget for us, plus what we have left in revolving funds. Now, they're providing me with a new laptop that I've been asking for for about three years. They finally found a used one in Town Hall somewhere that they... They're transferring all my information over on it. I had to drop it off a couple of days ago, because what I've got is slower than slow. So, trying to get material in funds is kind of tight, so... Anyway, we'll have a new laptop. If a new person coming, it's gonna happen. I won't need it.
Back to the old one.
So, anyway. Any other comments anyone else wants to make or any reportings? Thanks for coming on, Jim. And I want to thank the folks out there. If Dan is watching, or if not, I want to thank Dan Lavalley for his five years here on the board. He's very religious, showing up all the time in addition to his Select Board duties and the other hats he was wearing. So, thank you, Dan, and good luck down the road. And welcome Jim back. Appreciate having Jim back, because he knows where every rock unturned is in the town of Southampton, and that always comes in handy. It's always nice to have Paul around. Our resident engineer. Okay, so hearing no other comments or reports, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. I love those words. Second.
Motion made by Jim, seconded by Mark. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Thank you.